Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Planning Board on the 13th of June 2024 in the Town Office Building. And I'm Langdon Plummer, Chair of the Board, and I'd ask our board members to introduce themselves.
Aaron Brown, Vice Chair.
Gwen English.
Nancy Belanger, Select Board Representative.
Okay, and?
John Gruder, Clerk.
Okay.
Clerk. That means you also end up on that commission too, right? Which one is that? The Clerk has...
Rockingham Planning Commission?
Is that what it is?
Yeah, 15 years. That's what I forget last night.
What?
Wow.
For you?
Yes.
What commission?
The Rockingham Planning Commission.
Really?
Wow.
Gwen's on it, I'm on it.
And you're on it.
No, and previous member, Star-Spangled H, Thengal.
Oh, Catherine Willhouse.
Yes.
It was her birthday, isn't it?
And how often do you meet?
What was it? Facebook or something?
Well, it's the same day as my buddy's birthday. Once a month, I remember.
Catherine was great.
And these close commission meetings, we're kind of going to the meeting.
She's in Halifax, you know.
That's where she is still?
I don't think that came out.
It serves.
She's wonderful to work with.
She was. She was smart and...
Yeah, well, it serves.
Very unique person, really quality person.
London very...
Seaboard too.
London very...
Brayley.
Mostly Rockingham County, but not exclusively. And it's not a Rockingham County function. It's called Rockingham Planning Commission, but it's nothing to do with the county.
Oh.
It's one of seven authorized by any rate. We have a little short business to conduct this evening. Our case that we continue to this evening has been the developers requested to continue it to, I think, July 11th. July 11th. So our Chair was looking for such a motion, please.
I'll move to table Planning Board Case Number 24-4 to July 11th, 2024 at 7:00 PM.
Okay, is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion? I think we can do it with a voice vote, so those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That concludes our business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Can I make... Can I just?
Oh, we can talk a little bit, yes.
Little thing about that?
Of course, excuse me.
Good try.
It'll be really quick. Last night was...
Thanks, Lang.
Last night was the RPC Annual Dinner, and they had an... They always have an award ceremony, and last night they presented the James Hayden Award, and that is... Was established in remembrance of Jim Hayden, who was an RPC Commissioner from New Fields and longtime district conservationist for the Soil Conservation Service, which is now the Natural Resources Conservation Service for Rockingham County. He was instrumental in the development of the County Soil Survey and in efforts to protect the natural resource base of the county and region in the face of extensive development. So accordingly, the Hayden Award is intended to recognize those in the region who have made significant contributions to their communities or the greater region in natural resource conservation and planning. So last night, our very own Kristen Murphy was awarded.
Oh, wonderful.
Nice.
And I just wanted to have everybody aware of that and...
Good job, Kristen.
Yes, congratulations.
Have a girl when you see her.
Yeah, definitely.
It was very interesting. I kind of had the idea, and I said to Gwen, "What do you think?" She said, "Yes." She said, "I'll do the research," so of course she talked with Barbara. And we got an age and a half of... She's done everything.
She's done a lot.
Oh, she was so happy last night. Now, did she murder her husband?
Good. He was there too. I'm glad he was there.
What I got out of this discussion is they had a... The Rockingham County Committee had a dinner last night.
Yes.
And I'm on the committee as of today, not yesterday.
No.
Couldn't stop.
Let's get it clear. It was our annual meeting.
Yeah.
And we had a dinner meeting, which we haven't done since before COVID. And we went up to the... In Ry, the...
Atlantic, was it?
The Atlantic Grill?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's nice.
It's a nice place.
There's a little traffic.
Really nice outside.
In my office.
The fish is really good.
Well, they did up a faiforce.
Okay. Was fish one of the...
Well, if shrimp...
Did you show us it?
Sardines.
Scampi is fish, yes.
No. Is it Seaboard? What is shellfish? It's shellfish, not selfish.
Or you could have added...
Yes.
Variety of things, yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, can... Do we table the meeting minutes on the next meeting? I want to watch a part of it because I think...
Yes.
Something isn't there.
Table the minutes from our...
So, do I move to do that? Should I move to do that for you? Move to table the meeting minutes because it's on the agenda?
Sure.
So, I move to table the May 23rd, 2024 meeting minutes to our next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
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 Aye.
In favor? Aye?
Aye.
All together, no?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Just one thing to Nancy, if you had a couple of things, and we can talk about this after the meeting, if their conditions are gonna...
I don't know. I want to watch the meeting and make sure I'm remembering properly.
But if they're not in the minutes, Dave will have them in his conditions if it's a fence or the parking...
Yeah, I just want to...
Okay.
And may I just...
Out of curiosity, what were you looking at for?
We were talking about no parking signs on either side of the road and the possibility of putting a gate. So, my questions were there, but not their responses.
Yeah.
And I believe they were open to both, but I don't... Yes, but I want to double-check that before I ask that it be put.
The other thing is, and I know this is not the agenda, but that road from the dealer's parking lot down below, that's gonna be quite a steep thing there. And I'm hoping that they can see all right, you know, that if they're gonna... Because it's like this now, they're gonna have to take a lot of that banking down. I hope that doesn't hide the cars, and we might have to have them grade some of that banking away so they can see.
I just... I think because we table it, we have to wait till...
Yeah, that's fine.
And one more thing, if I may, Mr. Chair. Just remind everyone, our all-boards meeting is been scheduled for Tuesday, June 25th at 6:30 at the Public Library.
The date of that again is?
Tuesday, June 25th.
At 6:30.
Thank you.
At 6:30, and it has to stop by 8:00 because...
Yeah, any board... Any board member is welcome to these all-board meetings.
Encouraged.
They like to have boards represented. I usually make it.
It's good stuff.
And it's in the library. And the interesting thing against to me, it shows me that this town will not operate without volunteers.
Yeah, a lot of volunteers.
And it's a great opportunity for people to ask questions about process and things like that. So, yeah, I think they're really invaluable to have, so I'm glad we're back to having them.
Yeah.
Is there... Is there an agenda?
There will be. The Chair of the Board hasn't put one together yet.
I had a weird question. I mean, this is our meeting still, right?
Sure, we can talk a little bit.
The... What was it called? Zorg or something? What was that thing? Zoning Ordeance Review Committee?
Yep.
Where does that stuff really fall now? Is it... Kind of doesn't really go anywhere, right? Sort of just sits in this board at large?
I don't even think it's active at all, right?
It is inactive.
Well, so, yeah, so that's what I'm saying. Like, if we want to review a zoning issue, it kind of just comes upon us as a general board to figure that out.
Yes.
Right? Because this is where it gets reviewed and changes our proposed, I believe, is the...
And then they go on the ballot.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
Because that was one thing, for me, a while back, when we were having some, I don't know, strenuous approvals, let's put it that way. My thought there was when we kept seeing the same variances being granted at the zoning board, I had actually reached out to the couple of members on that board through Dave and through Doug and tried to encourage dialogue there, and that just went nowhere, honestly. I mean, we had a meeting, and it was more like, didn't see a lot of interest, unfortunately. And I don't... And I don't know... I know our board, I would consider vibrant, but a little bit tenuous at the moment just because of the numbers. There's not a lot of us, and I'm wondering, are they facing the same thing on the zoning board? Does anybody know?
I don't... If I had a computer, I could look.
Yeah, I was curious.
But a lot of our board, I think the Conservation Commission is one of the few that's not only full members, but they're alternate...
Waiting list.
Interesting.
Yeah.
A waiting list, I said.
Well, there's no waiting list, but yeah. Yeah, no, we don't... If that were the case, trust me, during the interviews, I'd be asking them to consider this board.
Because what happens in our process is when we get an application in general, I mean, it's in the 90th percentile of times, I gotta say. By the time we get an application, that applicant has generally sat down with Doug, sat down with Dave, sat down potentially with other groups within the town, and if they needed variances, they don't come to us without having them already. It's pretty rare that they come to us without that already in hand.
And if that's found in the review, that process, then it...
That they need that, they generally go there before they come in.
Yes.
Right? So, that's where, to me, it would be great if there was a little bit more open communication between our zoning board and our planning board, because, you know, vice versa. If they're consistently granting the same variances and seeing the same thing, then, you know, is that something that should change in the zoning? Because it doesn't seem like there's anything going on very often. It's pretty... We're kind of like in the... It feels to me like there's reviews of it, but a lot of it's kind of nitty-gritty stuff. It's not the bigger stuff, you know? And I know the stuff we're trying to do, but it seems like it... It seems like some stuff is out there, but it's moving a little slow, by any way. I wanted to start that out. That would be a reason to go to that meeting.
I'm sure the packet then here that we've been presented with is for books.
Yeah.
Because it's through, as amended last March, which was long ago, but so I would say that they were saying, "Take out the existing one and put this one in."
Yeah.
If you can't figure that out, that's what I think it's all about.
Yes. Anything, John? Master Plan update?
Anything happen with Matt, our review of the current plan or...
Waiting on the pedestrian stuff, right? That's coming.
Yeah.
As a general board.
He's supposed to have that this week, I think, David.
And I think he was getting...
We don't have a meeting.
We have nothing scheduled.
Because he said I was the only one that responded to his email, but I don't... I'm not sure I did. I said, "Okay." I said, "Yeah."
Now, we gotta have a refresher here.
And recovery. That's the last thing.
No, but unless he's got the final sidewalk street thing, then that's what we need to discuss, a review.
Right.
And he's supposed to have it this week, I think, so...
Yeah, that was the other thing. I mean, we haven't pushed... A lot of that master plan stuff is just reviewing the plan and what is in there and trying to make it vibrant, and it's actually been a good, good committee. It's worked well, but, you know, if anybody's interested in jumping in with that, too, we probably do need more. We only have...
The topic, back to the Rockingham Planning Commission.
Oh.
That we had two speakers, basically speaking about the rail trails and how they are looking... The view is to have them all over the place, and then I guess in some states, they actually are part of a state park.
Yep.
And we're continuing to... Ours are continuing to grow in a variety of places, and this guy's talking about the whole eastern seaboard mainly.
The trail that they're working on, Hampton Ride of Portsmouth, which I rode last week, even though there were signs up that said the trail wasn't open. I thought that was the name of the trail.
It's not open yet, yeah.
This trail is an open trail.
You're a rebel.
It's pretty nice, you know? It's gonna go, hooks up to Maine, it will, and in Massachusetts, and someday you could ride your bike to Miami from here on the same trail.
That's the gold.
They gotta get that Seaboard.
And a lot of it is... A lot of it in other states is done there ahead of us, but the Seaboard thing is from Hampton down to Seaboard is going through the wetlands, the marshes and stuff.
Yeah. Where are you gonna put it, Department?
We're gonna put it right where it is, because there's a train track there.
That goes through the nuke.
The train track's been washed away.
Well, there must be some foundation of where the track used to be.
Well, you know, the ocean's rough.
Are you talking in Hampton?
Yeah.
Hampton Falls line?
It's gotta get down there to... I'm not sure where it exists in Massachusetts.
What section are you talking about? Oh, man.
It's in... There's parts of it done...
Is it in Amesbury already or...?
Yeah. Yeah, I've taken...
So, this one now, I know it goes down to Hampton through the... By the airport. I'm not sure how far it goes.
It...
So...
I get on it with a buddy of mine on the road next to Home Depot. There was an overpass. We carried our bikes down to the trail and rode it up to Portsmouth, and you can see... It doesn't go all the way to Portsmouth yet, and you can see they get a lot of work to do on that end. At the far end of Islington Street, you can look up from the path, and you can see Islington Street. So, it's in...
Goes right by their skate park now.
Yeah, it does. The new skate park.
Yeah.
And then there's a... Crosses like very close to on...
Breakfast Hill.
Breakfast Hill Road. The golf course is right there. In fact, I told the guy who works there, he said, "You need to offer a cold beer service for the bikers."
Beer cart.
Yeah, they do that in... I know there's a... In Pinellas County, Florida, which is St. Pete and Clearwater, an old train deck is now the Pinellas Trail.
Yeah.
And then they have links to it. They keep adding so you can get to it, not get run over. But all the restaurants that backed off, back to the trail now have a deck out back for selling beer to the bikers.
They talked about the economic impact of these things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they have... I did write both of our senators because they wanted to spend a whole bunch of money building a bridge from Newington to Dover, whatever that... I think that's the...
The Old Sullivan Bridge, maybe?
The Old Sullivan Bridge is no longer viable.
Right.
But, you know, and I wrote to both... They both acknowledged it, but had never answered me that it's a waste of money because it doesn't go anywhere. Both ends have had a dead end, so I... You should take all that money and put it into the finishing our link, because that's where tourists are, that tourists will use that, and then maybe make some connecting things. And that's why we've talked many... We talked about this with Scott from Rockingham County about, you know, 111...
Box, by the way. No, it's okay.
He's been very involved with that for years, yeah.
Yeah.
That's cool. I think it's really cool.
The whole thing is... They did a decent job.
So, those kinds of things become for the Rockingham Planning Commission, and 93's extension, all those skillions of dollars are coming through.
That gentleman, Scott, do you remember his last name, John?
Scott Vocal?
I think that's right.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Martha Scott.
Yeah, he's a good, nice guy.
We've met with him a few times. He's the one spearheading the whole thing for us, and he'll be presenting to Exeter Planning Board at some point, the whole general pool.
Yeah.
But we've been vetting that with him for a while, like, he's using us as...
So, he was saying that New Hampshire now is gonna be up with the other states soon.
Well, yeah, if you only have 13 miles to do, it's...
And then the other night on Chronicle, they were talking about one that went from Bath, New Hampshire, across over to Maine, I'm gonna say Freiburg anyway, 82 miles.
Wow.
And that's all set.
The Adventure Trail, they call it?
I think that's right.
I was on that last year. It's not as... It's in really rough shape.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, but it's an old rail trail, and the advantage of a rail trail is that the engineers designed them, that there's only a 15% grade on it because the trains can't pull that up.
Right.
So, they... The engineers are good. They figure ways around the mountains and stuff like that, or a long, long incline as there is on that trail. But that trail, hopefully they do, it goes from, I forget where in Maine, and then we biked it in two days with a bunch of us, and it's about 80 miles.
Yeah, 82 miles, it's such a... From Bath to Freiburg, or maybe a little further than Maine? I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think maybe Freib...
Anyway.
Yeah, it's nice, but then that'll be nice if, you know, and then if someday some of these things get connected, and there are some other smaller trails in the state. Anyway, so...
That's a good plug.
That's all I have to report about that.
That's informative, little plug for rail trails, and that's great.
I think it's John's passion, too.
Yeah.
My passion, I just... In my old age, I don't like riding on the roads.
Yeah, roads are dangerous.
Scary as hell. And never mind, the motorcyclists are all killing themselves, but the people...
Well, and the texting part, when people are driving, texting, and you're on a bike, you have nowhere to go.
You know, you get... It just...
No, it's scary. I remember that being scary when I was a young guy doing triathlons.
Yeah.
Because there's nowhere to train.
Yeah.
And now it's only gotten worse, not better.
Exactly. Exactly. And there's a few, you know, there's a few bike lanes.
Yeah. That disappear, too.
The funniest one, yeah, they do. They just stop. When they resurfaced Guinea Road on the Stratum side, they added a bike lane, but then it hits extra, just stops, and the road gets...
Now what?
Well, it has to. Stop at the Exeter line, right? They can't make it.
I know, but it's just like some of these, maybe should have talked, "Okay, we're gonna pave this." What are you guys gonna do?
I think the problem is the bridge.
The bridge is gonna be a problem, yeah.
Yeah.
And there's... It doesn't get enough traffic to be worth spending any money on it, you know? But the Sullivan Bridge up there, you know, is beyond... I don't understand, couldn't you sully the steel or the iron in that bridge for someone?
They were trying to give it away, weren't they?
That's what I mean. You can have all the steel if you take it down.
I don't understand the economics of it either. It must be ridiculous to get it out of there. It must...
Yeah, yeah. It's not easy, but you probably have to...
You gotta float it somehow, and that's a...
And then you've gotta deal with temporary stopping the traffic.
Well, no, it's not attached.
It's the discontinued one.
The Sullivan Bridge...
But if taking it down for safety, you've got a lot of crap.
No, you'd have a crane in the water or something. You'd have to have a, you know, I don't know.
Any number of ways.
But...
It's all money.
What they did is they took one of the northbound lanes, blocked it off with Jersey barriers, and that's the bike thing.
Yeah, right.
But they want their fourth lane back so bad, and it's... I said, "I..." And I, you know, I go that way enough because my son lives up there and the grandkids, and it's like, this is out there in traffic on that road. You know, every at 4:00 in the afternoon, people getting out of work or something.
It gets it, yeah. Afternoons, especially heading into a weekend, it's ridiculous up there.
There, I know 95...
Go north.
95 is ridiculous.
95 Friday afternoons, forget it.
It's falling as well.
Yeah, because I have to go drive to the court sometimes before they close in the afternoon, I.
You could sit the, keep your mouth, right?
Yeah, yeah, it, it gets packed up pretty bad from Route 1.
$72 million worth of backup?
Look, I can't put a price tag, I'm not gonna come to our prices.
I think they thought it was gonna be $40, and the bid came, the one bid they got was $72, $72 million.
Yeah.
That's, that's insane.
Yeah, they need.
It's not that, it's not a $72 million issue.
Yeah. You're talking about for adding the bike thing?
Yeah, I don't know.
That is insane.
And then I think, and then I think that include, is reusing whatever that Sullivan Bridge is sitting on, the cement.
Okay, the pilings.
Pilings, yeah, that's, yeah, so it's like, I don't know, they.
A lot of engineering to do with it.
You're in the wrong business.
Yeah.
No doubt.
I've just learned a long time ago never to talk about the money until we start seeing the plans.
Oh, yeah.
Because there's just no way, I mean, it sounds like a lot of money, but when you start to get into details.
Well, yeah.
It adds up pretty quickly.
No, I agree.
It's a fast current still there.
Oh, yeah.
It's a very strong current.
Getting into the bay, but it's still fast.
But if you're building on top of, you don't even have to go underwater.
You wouldn't think, right?
You're not having to build.
Everything costs about twice as much as you think it should right now.
And there's, yeah, very, very few projects commit on budget anymore.
Right.
Especially the last three or four years, because they, prices change all the time, you know?
No, it's still hard, you still see empty shelves sometimes with suppliers. Well, you're probably looking for a motion, young fellow.
Well, there's no public here this evening, so I think it's.
Unlike usual when they're out in the.
Yeah. If you're looking for motion, I'll, I'll motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second?
Yeah, I, I state that we're adjourned.
All right.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.